They're having a good time over there, all right. I hear it's a beautiful day out there. I've been inside all day and I look forward to seeing how nice it is outside later. But now we have the work of our board meeting, so let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm excited to say we have a public comment today. Andy Schenk, please, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Andy Schenk. I am a member of the Better Bus Coalition, which has advocated for better bus service in Cincinnati for a number of years. My comment today is related to the articulated buses that will be purchased for the Metro Rapid Service. I had a chance to look at one of them at Fountain Square a few days ago, last, maybe a week or two ago. And I was with my -- I didn't get a, like, as good of a look as I wanted because we were kind of, they were running around and everything. But it didn't look to me like getting on the bus. My comment was, is related to the center doors for the articulated buses that will be purchased. Some of the systems that I've ridden in other parts, other cities, have buses where there's a large space in the center, through the center doors for strollers, wheelchairs, potentially even bikes that fold up, that can just be rolled straight on and you can just park your stroller, et cetera, in that space. And it didn't look like that bus was configured like that, like it was a narrow space with just seats for passengers. So I wanted to, as a parent with young kids, it's really nice when I can roll a stroller on. And part of that relates to, I know the policy with Metro as far as whether you can park your stroller if you need to fold up your stroller. I realize there are different complications, but I would encourage you with purchasing the articulated buses. It's an opportunity to provide a better service, especially with the platforms that'll be built to roll things on, to look at that option for being able to just take a stroller on or a wheelchair and provide a quicker boarding and better boarding service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments and the insight for the vehicles as we move BRT forward because I can assure you, there are other people with strollers and other things that will want to take the system, so we got to be focused on that and looking at key staff to make sure that we're focused on that. So thank you. Share update. I wanted to focus and say, I hope it doesn't take too much from you, that we had the signing ceremony this morning for MTF. Jason has probably gone home for the day, but Jason worked so hard on that and of course, Hala and Shamu. What was striking to me this morning was how appreciative all of the municipalities that were there were. And we had a moment where, just for open conversation, and it was, it felt effusive to me, right? After four years of this program, the number of contracts, projects, and some municipalities have had multiple projects, they really feel like it's having an impact. And, okay, we've got four years. We have, I think, 21 more years on the current levy. Thinking about the over 100 projects we've had to this point and what we can do in, what, five times more, is really quite staggering. I love the before and after pictures everywhere we go. I don't think I'm alone in that. So I want to just note that for the meeting today. And we will be moving forward to the next year with, is it March 3rd, is the briefing on the rule changes and the year moving forward. And I think there are a lot of people looking forward to that briefing. All right. So that was my update for today. I think we can move into our action items. We need to approve the board minutes from January 28th. I'll move that and Ms. Clark has seconded it. All in favor say aye. All opposed say left. Any abstentions? All right, the minutes do pass. And that takes us to the finance committee report. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Good evening, everyone. We had a wonderful meeting in finance committee. There's a lot of things that, that we were told, or rather, the numbers told us in January. And so you are going to want to stay tuned for that. Mr. Walker, if you would, please brief us.
Do you want to go and do this right now, Ms. Clark?
I'm sorry.
It's later on the agenda, but I can go ahead and do it right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Etheridge, which would you prefer?
I'm sorry.
We don't need to go out of order. I'm sorry, we can.
We will follow the agenda.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Don't need to.
I don't think so. Whatever you're updating.
Well, then, no, I don't have any additional, I don't have any additional comments at this time when we looked at, only that, I do like the strategies that, that we are taking on in terms of finance, making sure that all of our hiring practices are commensurate with the budget because we know that wages, wages and earnings are, you know, the bulk of, of our spending. And so I was, I thought that was really thoughtful in how the department is taking into all those, making all those decisions, the most, the most, the ones that are the most necessary. Also, with how we ran in January, we had that one week that was pretty terrible, but nevertheless, we still were able to come, come out much, much further than we anticipated. And when we compare that with our previous year, you know, it looks really good. Had we had those days, we know that we certainly would have demolished our previous year. So I'm very much looking forward to what, what February is going to hold for us.
Thank you very much. And we, we did have a report on fuel hedging, didn't we, this month? And it was pretty impressive, so I wanted to note that. And it sounded like we would be moving forward and hedging even further because the, the team was getting some pretty good rates. So that's good news. All right, planning and ops, Mr. Drehouse.
Okay, we had a robust meeting, planning and ops meeting. Thank you all for attending. A lot of good discussion. Certainly, the good news was always good to report out, so thank you guys for reporting that out. A couple items that we discussed, we had the, well, like Ms. Clark just said, the OTP numbers and the missed trip numbers. We were hit by the storm and we had a lot of good data to share about that. In fact, on the graph, it showed that our numbers on OTP and missed trips were quite good if you take out that unusual event that we experienced. And there's some follow-up items on that. So that was a good discussion. Also, we had a good discussion about the safety, well, Government Square. And the consultant did a fine job giving us his input. I know the staff has taken that under advisement and will respond accordingly. So it was a good discussion, a good back and forth with the consultant. There are some action items that, that came out of our meeting. Andy, do you want to talk about the MOU?
I'd be happy to.
Happy to have it turned over to you. Okay.
Thank you. As we discussed in committee, we have a proposal to the board to allow staff to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Cincinnati for community service officers. As you all know, we currently contract with the city for CPD or Cincinnati Police Department Detail in and around our transit system at some of our transit facilities. In the past couple of years, the city has established an alternative response team. These are community service officers that respond to nonviolent situations, things that require community support. They have expertise in mental health and community resources. It's another public service that we could take advantage of. However, there's no contractual framework between Metro and the city to engage these officers and us to essentially purchase these services. So that is the crux of the MOU. It is, just establishes the framework that allows us to, you know, purchase these services on behalf of the city. We've already kind of talked with them. It's being managed out of their emergency services, 911, 311 Dispatch Center, with their manager, Bill Vidra. We've already had communications with our ops and safety team about how this arrangement would work, when and where these officers would be placed within the transit system. Right now, we're specifically focusing these resources, the plan is, to specifically focus these resources in areas where we have a lot of customers and students at the same time, right? So that's often afternoons in downtown, at our other transit centers throughout the region. Happy to answer any questions about the MOU itself or any of the mechanics behind it.
Yeah. In, in committee, we talked about how we, we got to this point of, of using the MOU and, and the services we're providing, the coordination that sort of undertakes with regard to CPS, with regard to a police force, Cincinnati Police, and the Sheriff's Department, I believe, too. So this is a good outcome. The action item is that we'd like to approve this MOU. I'll put forth the motion to approve the MOU. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Clark, second. Discussion? Questions?
This is a quick question. So is this in addition to what they're already providing or is this in lieu of?
It's a great question. It's in addition to, right? We currently spend, we, Metro spends over a million dollars a year in CPD Detail. We will continue to spend over a million dollars a year in CPD Detail. This is supplementary to those services.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Hearing none.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying, do we need to take a roll call though? Okay, we'll take the roll, Natalie. Thank you.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor?
Sorry. Throw it back to you. Okay, well, Mr. Anderson updated us on Title VI in our committee meeting. That's our next action item. We comply with the federal government's requirements with, under Title VI. And the recommendation that we put forth was to authorize Daryl and the, and the members of our executive team to execute the resolution authorizing staff to submit the updated Title VI service standards and policies to the FTA by April 1st of 2025. So that is the action item we're voting on with regard to Title VI. Is Mr. Anderson here?
Right there.
There he is. Okay. Would you like to speak about Title VI, please?
Sure. So it is a federal requirement, as Board Member Drehouse mentioned, every three years, any transit property receiving federal assistance, grants, buses, you name it, has to submit a Title VI program update. This is actually a precursor to the entire program. Tonight, we'll just talk about service standards. So we talk a lot about KPIs, whether it's on-time performance, frequency of service, where shelters and benches go on your bus stops. This is a federal framework to ensure that certain communities, i.e. low income and/or minority, don't receive worse service than other communities. So it's a statute that we've complied with. We're in good standing and we're just updating existing policies. So the next few slides are just going to talk about the KPIs. Good news is, you've had dinner. Bad news is, you're going to all be associate degree transit planning members because it's very, it's a bit technical for about five minutes. Yep. So we will also come back to you in April, as Board Member Drehouse mentioned, with the actual updated Title VI program. These standards feed that and they have to be actually approved separately. So, so Title VI, Civil Rights Act of 1964, you know, huge. It's been 51 years now. Primarily for transit agencies is to make sure we're doing the right thing and that we don't, you know, prioritize certain communities over other communities. Next slide. So we'll talk about three things this evening. The service standards, on-time performance, frequency, things of that nature, as well as the major service change policy. Anytime Metro decides to add a new route or cancel a route or even modify routes, it could trigger that as well as fair changes. And disparate impact and disproportionate burden policies, which talk about, again, what we do, how we conduct our business, what are the impacts and burdens to, again, minority and/or low-income populations. So the next slide, I believe, is a placeholder. Here's a high-level roll-up of the six metrics that we're going to update with your approval. We have some changes for some and then one for, we have no recommended changes. You can see here it's vehicle load, service availability, vehicle assignment, distribution of transit amenities, frequencies, and on-time performance. Next slide. Service standards in terms of average vehicle load. This is how packed, how full are your buses throughout the course of a service day, from 5:00 a.m. to, some of our routes run 24/7. So what this is saying is, Metro, you shall not run full buses, meaning no seats available, standees only, throughout the course of the day. It doesn't say you can't have packed buses at some time. It's just that the metrics you see here, 1.2, 1.0, are talking about the availability of seats. So if you had a 37-passenger bus, that 1.2 is, you shall not have 120% of that bus full as an average throughout your service day. We're nowhere close to that, even in our busiest routes that we're putting BRT service on because there's so much demand there. A, a high peak for us would be like 0.4, 0.5. Again, we're well within these standards. FTA just mentioned that we needed a little more specificity, little more clarity on the types of routes we run and the peak, off-peak vehicle load threshold therein. Again, highly technical. It's mainly saying, we will not run packed buses. Because if we did run packed buses, Metro would need to add service. You can't have packed buses from the start of your day to the end of the day. I mean, that's simply unacceptable. So yeah, next. Service availability. This is making sure that we are available to our customers. Our proposed standard is that a bus stop should not be within more than a half mile from 75% of your population. So we've done a good job at that. We're about 78% right now as it stands. The old standard was, it's pretty specific. The Fed said, probably overly specific. This is clean. It applies to low-income, high-income, minority, non-minority, everything in between. And you can see, most of the populated area, we, we serve within, well within that half-mile threshold. Next slide. Frequency. Again, these are bare, minimum standards. These are not what we aspire to, but it shows the frequency standards that we will abide by for your mainline routes, your major 24-hour routes. Nothing in the peak under 20 minutes. These are your Route 43s, your Route 4s, your Route 11s. These are typically running 15 minutes or better. Certainly, BRT would be, would fall into this category. Off-peak, you can see the frequency shift a little bit, then to late night. Then on weekends, we have service standards for our major, our non-major, our minor routes. A minor route would be a route, you know, that's coming, you know, not very frequently, like the new 61 or whatever. We'll begin to beef that up. But these, again, are the minimum standards. So if our routes were to fall underneath this standard, we would look at these to, to beef them up in terms of frequency. These are our bare minimum standards. So that's your frequency standard. Next slide. On-time performance. We talk about on-time performance every month in committee. Our goal is still 86.5%. Our Title VI service standard is proposed to be 80%. That's calculated the same way as we do on our monthly meetings. Again, the idea was just to have something a little more realistic. Certainly, we would love to have 86.5%, but we feel like 80% looking at a peer review of our agency was, was a solid and defensible metric. Next slide. Vehicle assignment. So this policy is designed to make sure your, your newest buses and the amenities therein, think of the onboard screens or the wheelchair procurement, or, I don't know, maybe we'll have a popcorn machine on a bus one day, that all these amenities that we put out there, we don't prioritize one community over another community in terms of what routes deploy these amenities. So our policy mainly says, if there's high ridership, we will prioritize, prioritize those buses of getting those amenities. And that covers your, your low-income and your minority populations, primarily because how Cincinnati is designed. We're a hub-and-spoke. Downtown, you're inner ring and then you're outer ring. Basically, you're covering everything with any route that goes to Government Square. So I can, I can point to the fact that, you know, last time we had this policy, we specifically called out, we had Wi-Fi and APC counters. We're, we're past that. We have Wi-Fi on all our buses. We have APCs on all our buses. It's a cleaner policy and it, and it covers Title VI quite well, in my opinion. And we're almost turned, turned down here. Next slide, I think, is going to talk about transit amenities. This was the only service standard that had no recommendations. Primarily, we use ridership as the main determinant for where we choose to put a bench or shelter, assuming that there's room and, and community buy-in for that. You can see the amenities. We have benches, shelters, timetable. You could maybe update this, say, an electric, electronic solar-powered schedule at one point, trash receptacles or what have you. Again, primarily based on ridership. And that, those are the numbers in the chart.
So a question like this, you know, I know we've talked about redoing our stops and shelters and stuff quite a bit in the past. How much of this are we keeping?
There's a lot there, but I can say benches, you know, we've actually lowered it since COVID to where we'll look at putting benches between 15 and 20 instead of 25. This is a conservative standard. I would say we're about 60 to 70% compliant just on benches. But we've not even, we're not even really scraping the surface in terms of all the benches, all the shelters, all the amenities we're going to put out, including all brand-new bus stop signs. So we'll have good news to report on this moving forward.
All right, two questions. Excuse me for my raspy voice, but, first question I have is, do we have a policy in place if a neighborhood's too dangerous to go in? I'll say, I live in Milford. Let's say Milford's just the pits, the pits. Okay, I can see it. Do we have a policy for that?
We don't have a written policy for that. We, with our safety team, monitor incidents. And if we do see recurring patterns, we use our relationship with CPD and others to try to address root cause. But there is no written policy about a certain level that would prevent us from, from operating. I think our, our thought process there is, you know, what drives our decision-making in terms of where we put routes and stops is the, the demand for the service. And if there is challenges with providing that service, we try to address that, but not deprive that, that area of the service that, that would, is warranted based on the demand.
The second question I have is this. Most of you know, I ran a trucking company, so I didn't go anywhere. I didn't make money. But anyway, if I did go somewhere and I lost money, I left it. The question is this. Suppose we had a route, say Milford again, is a real loser. Would we think to move that to a more highly populated route, cut Milford off?
So, again, I don't want to speak for the, the planning folks, but that's exactly what our SPDI team has always been, double teaming productivity. We have short-range and long-range trains and plans. I don't know if a lot of you want to speak to the, the evaluation that we do.
Sure.
Pick-by-pick basis.
Yeah, and, and I'll let Steve maybe go in more detail. But, but yeah, so periodically every, you know, few times a year, we, the staff is looking at each and every route in terms of not only ridership by route, but ridership by trip throughout the whole day, peak, off-peak, the on-time performance, the productivity, locations, even the, the bus stops, which, which ones are being used and so on. And that's how we've been for the past few years, making changes throughout the entire network. That's a constant exercise for, for the, for the staff. Steve, do you want to add anything to that?
Like I say, we've had like seven major
Like I say, we've had like seven major, quote-unquote, major service changes in, in three years. So we're always kind of tweaking based on what you just said. And I love Milford, by the way.
If I may jump in. One of the remarkable things about Metro sorta, over the past several years, is the efficiency that has been gained in the system through exactly that work. So, the constant attention to it and modifications so that we will have an efficient system. And some of the numbers that I was seeing earlier today have us surpassing, you know, rail systems in terms of efficiency, which is like staggering success for, for what we're doing along those lines.
If I may add on that point, thank you for mentioning that, Blake. And back in two thousand nineteen, we started making improvements to the network in twenty-twenty-one. But in two thousand nineteen, the, we, the planning department, we looked at twelve hundred origin destinations across our service area, and we ran those through Google Map and looked at travel time by bus versus car. Then a year or so ago, we did the same exercise using the exact same twelve hundred origin destinations. And the current network is twenty-three percent more efficient than it used to be a few years ago. And that's due to the work that the staff, you know, does.
Are you done, Steve?
Two more, three more?
Okay.
Those technical slides are still there.
I'm expecting my diploma in three slides.
Yes, yes, yes. So the major service change policy, we're not recommending any changes to it. However, we're sharing it with you all, just for clarification's sake, that we define it anytime service is added or taken away more than twenty-five percent of what's called route revenue hours, meaning at any time that the driver's behind the wheel and is able to take fare. So on the layover, on the, on the, on the way in and the way out would be not revenue. Those would be deadhead. So we add a route, even, even one route that serves maybe, you know, two trips a day. That's a, that's a major service change. When we forego the eighty-five due to low ridership, that was a service change. Adding BRT will be a service change. Every time that triggers, we actually have to do a GIS analysis based on census, blocking census track data to compare well before and after stops got moved, did folks lose access based on the three-quarter mile. So it, it's somewhat robust. A lot of agencies consult out. We do all of ours in-house, cause Hollid's so awesome. He teaches all GIS. So, that's our major service change. Some agencies are higher, thirty percent, some are lower. We feel like twenty-five percent is, is good and solid for Metro. That's the major service change policy. No recommendation changes there. The next one is disparate impact and disproportionate burden. These are ways of, again, it's a lot of words here, primarily saying, do right by folks. Don't, you know, primarily favor one favored community over another community that's not favored. I'll give you an example. So the Route nineteen comes downtown, goes out on Colerain. There's two branches hypothetically on the nineteen. You have the Mount Airy branch that stops in Mount Airy. And you have the full nineteen that goes all the way out to Colerain Town Center. That's primarily suburban, a little more affluent slightly. If we were to cut service on the nineteen that just went to Mount Airy, we would be disproportionately burdening low-income folks that were on the mainline. And so everything from downtown out to Mount Airy, you're hitting a few communities that are transit-dependent. If we favored the Colerain area and said, you know what, you guys keep your twenty-minute service. We're actually gonna give the downtown portion forty-minute service. That would trigger a disparate impact. And it doesn't mean we can't do it, but we'd have to mitigate it. We'd have to stand here at a, at an open house and defend that with, with numbers. We don't have that problem here, cause we're, we're doing the right thing and. But they're federal, it's a federal framework to ensure that transit agencies aren't favoring communities over other communities. I, I hope that kind of makes sense. For, for the fare change example, if we said, you know what, we're gonna raise fares on local service by twenty percent, but you know, express service, we'll only raise that five percent. That may potentially be, be a disproportionate burden or a disparate impact. So it's how you, how you choose to treat your ridership based on those demographics. And that brings me to the end of my conclusion. I really wanna appreciate, love here. Love talking about Title VI. Thank you.
Hey, quick question. Who, I probably should know this, but what, what's the audit process around this? Like how, who checks what and?
It's a great question. Federal Transit Administration essentially is the oversight agency. Happens in two ways with Title VI. One, we get these standards approved. We then build those standards into a Title VI program, which you all will see and hopefully approve here in a couple months. That gets sent to FTA Chicago, essentially uploaded in the system, and they are supposed to review that documentation and give us feedback. Then, with that program in place, as these changes occur, if these changes are triggered, we're supposed to do that analysis in-house. We compile all of those analyses for all those fare increases or, or service changes over a three-year period. And then every three years, the Federal Transit Administration comes and does their triennial review, where they say, hey, tell us how many times you raised fares in the last three years. And we'll tell them, and then they'll say, show us all the analysis that you did with respect to Title VI, right? So that's the essentially audit process. It's more of a compliance review than an audit. And we are currently in the middle of our twenty-twenty-five triennial review with FTA. So they're right now gonna look back the last three years to make sure that we did this work.
Okay. So it's not, it's not a, like you're, you're not doing testing yourself around the process and the procedures. It's more of, you do analysis if there's a change, but then you get that there every three years.
Yeah, essentially, we self-govern.
Yeah.
Yes. And what we do is we would have to, again, like for example, the service change piece. We would conduct our own analysis. We'd make our own determination whether we're having a negative impact or not.
Yeah.
And then if we determine that we wouldn't, we would put that in the file, and then we would wait for FTA to show up two and a half years later to look at it. We don't, they don't give us approval for any of these changes, right? We don't wait for approval before we make the service change. We just, we do all of our due diligence to document compliance. And then they come in after the fact and not, kinda do a post-review.
There's also a board role over those years. So if we add a fare increase, the analysis would be done and presented to the board and stated that we are in compliance, right?
Correct. So with each of those, every time we go through this, we do, we have to do, if it triggers Title VI, and a fare increase automatically triggers Title VI, we have to go through that analysis and we give the results of those analyses to the board prior to you all making final recommendations about those changes.
Okay.
It's important we understand this so that when that comes up, we can make sure we're.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. And, and I mean, and it was really more about, I forgot the, the phrase you used, do right by folks. Was that, was that the, the official phrase? So I was trying to, I was trying to understand with the, how do we check the do right by folks principle? So, so that makes sense. Okay. I'm good. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Kala. So, so what's before us is an opportunity to approve a resolution authorizing the C-suite team here to execute a resolution for the staff to submit an update to Title VI service standards and policies to the FTA by April first of twenty-twenty-five. So I'm putting forth that motion. Is there a second? All right, thanks, Sonya. Sonya, seconds. Roll call, Natalie, please.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets? And Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the two discussion items and action items. There's one more action item on our agenda that we put on consent. But it's really more of a compliment to Ms. Hairston for her hiring. We needed to extend some more funds for the uniforms. So the contract we have in place will be adjusted to increase the total not to exceed value from one point five-six to one point seven-five. It's an increase of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So we discussed that a bit in committee, but decided to put it on the consent agenda. So I'll put forth a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Tony, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Ms. Taylor.
Okay, thank you. And those are all our items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drehouse and Planning and Ops. I think we have one modification to the agenda here. Oh, it's correct on your screens for Paratransit Coordinating Committee. On my printout, I had Infrastructure Bike and Row. So let's go ahead with what's on the screen, Paratransit Coordinating Committee. Ms. Moss?
Thank you. I don't know if any of these will get close enough to me. Oh, okay, great, fantastic. I hope everybody can hear me. I'm referencing my notes, cause I was really afraid I was gonna forget all the things. So forgive me if it sounds like I'm reading. But after a series of very interesting circumstances last Thursday, we did commence the first Paratransit Committee meeting since October of twenty-three. So that felt like an accomplishment in and of itself. And so it was my honor to sit in as chair on behalf of Mr. Kelly and to be accompanied by Mr. Drehouse. We reviewed a series of significant improvements to the paratransit service provided, including the advancements of an app that you can use to, or I'm sorry, not an app. It was a online portal that you can use to cancel, change, and schedule rides. Also incredible progress on an initiative to improve regional access and mobility. And that would be coordinating of paratransit trips across served areas. So, say between Tank Metro and Butler County Regional Transportation. So we also discussed opportunities for improved coordination between major event organizers as our city puts a higher priority on improving accessibility. And so we used the things that we worked on for Blink as an example. And Mr. Drehouse had an excellent suggestion of a Calliope music festival, I believe, that is coming to town. And.
Kazoo, Kazoo Festival.
The Ohio Heritage Festival.
Surrounded around the riverboats, right? That's why I'm stuck on the Calliope part. So we also talked about evaluating cost per rider of access versus Metro Now. And staff's gonna be working on that to provide at a future meeting. And we reviewed the impact Issue Seven has had in terms of paratransit, reflecting the changes our fixed routes have made. And I wanna say that's the news, but that's not my line. So. If there's any questions.
I just have a quick question. When we were in, when we were in PNO, there was, there was some interesting discussion as well surrounding, surrounding our Metro Now, which has, which has been really great. And we're seeing some, perhaps maybe some movement a little bit from access. Did you all happen to talk about that or?
I think that's kind of where that conversation is gonna go, hopefully, as we kind of talk about the comparison. The length mileage-wise of an access trip is significantly longer than a Metro Now trip. So it's gonna be a little bit more detailed of a, of a dive to kind of do that comparison.
Thank you.
Actually, there's, yeah, a little bit of maybe a piggyback question. Access is a different cost. So, right? So, what does that, what does that look like? I'm not quite sure what the question is, but I'm glad I'm dancing around. But in terms of just, when we see those dollars, that, it's a, it's a pretty significant difference per rider. Is that going to, do we anticipate that that's going to kind of bring down some of our, our rider dollars on access? Or because some is moving to Now?
Well, the cost that it, it takes to, to facilitate an access ride is so much significantly more. And so that's why the fare is, is more as well. And so I would like to see if there is space there in, in folks taking advantage of Metro Now in place of access, you know, if that would be a benefit to us and, and how we can kind of utilize that framework that's, that's there. So yeah, we would love to have you as, I may have mentioned, it was only Mr. Drehouse and I there. So by all means, you're invited.
I am, I am for ten, so.
There were plenty of other people there. Just, we're the only two board members there.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
But in terms of the cost though, I think, was the maximum cost per trip eight dollars?
Well, that's for the coordinated, like cross-service trips.
Okay.
Yeah. And access riders now is four twenty-five? Is that correct?
Four. The, four dollars, yeah. Yeah, so for the, yeah, for the regional mobility, it's, it's the team thought that for eight dollars would be a fair number, eight dollars per trip, cause it's gonna be across jurisdictions.
Right. So the example there was like Alexandria, Kentucky up to Westchester, right?
Yeah.
Eight dollars.
Yeah, exactly. And I mean, it can't be compared to Uber, obviously. This would be, but still, you know, single ride, one, one-seat trip. And right now, the Tank fare is two fifty. We're charging four. Butler is free right now, but it used to be four dollars as well. So for eight dollars for the convenience of not having to go through three different organizational agencies, you know, and so on, that's a fair number.
Or spending your Christmas on Fountain Square, as I did one time.
Right, right. Very valuable.
It's real things. I'm happy to provide context anytime we'd like.
Thank you very much for having that committee meeting, bringing it back. I know that staff has been hard at work on all of these projects for several years. And it's great that we can re-engage on these topics and make sure they continue to move forward. So thank you very much for that on a challenging day. Very much so.
But, thanks to the folks here, I did get here, so.
I'm sorry?
I said, thanks to Metro, I did get here though, eventually. So, yeah.
I love it.
Yeah, right?
Good, yeah.
Who knew that sidewalks would be so icy? I was not expecting it, and today it's sixty, so.
Mr. Walker, I know you wanted to go earlier. Now.
It's time for the, the wall of numbers. Excuse me. I'm getting all choked up here. Worried about this. So, wanna start off first here with, to kind of frame the month. You know, this was the first month of the year, and as we all know, sales tax kind of trails, so that's, that's posted to budget. We also, you know, I like to say that this is the first month to see how good was our budget? How accurate was it? Did we include all the data and all the details? And really wanna, you know, big thank, thank you to Kevin Ruth and his team, along with everyone at Metro that helped with it. Because when you can go through and look at the actuals and understand why there are any variances to your budget, that's a good budget. So very happy with that and kudos to the team there. And also, as you know, in January, we had some bad weather. You know, the, the week of January sixth, pretty much shut down a lot of the city. And so that did have an impact for us. We'll go through the summary here. You can see our revenue was basically right on budget. You know, we were unfavorable to budget by twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is not something that's surprising considering the weather we had. Looking at our expenses, those were favorable or less than budget. Largely, those expenses were driven by, we had a, an access retro payment that was budgeted in twenty-twenty-five, but we had paid it in twenty-twenty-four. And also, we had some favorable treatment with our, with our fuel usage. When, when you have the bad weather for a week, not all the buses are on the road running, so we, we saved some fuel there. You net those down to a six-hundred-thousand-dollar loss for the month, which compared to our budget, was better by almost seven-hundred thousand dollars. So in, in, in my book, this was a very good month to start the year. Our ridership was unfavorable to budget, but as we talked about, not unreasonable when you look at the, at the, the week that we had in January. But just to frame that, that's pretty much flat to last year. So all in all, some good news there. Going into some details, we, we've kind of gone through these. Nothing substantial or elaborate to talk about on the revenue side. On the expenses, we, we had the, the access accrual in here that we didn't use. We, we paid it last year. But also to Ms. Clark's comment, we are looking at our hiring. And so we, we had a higher vacancy than rate than we had budgeted, because when we have a replacement hire, in, in. hire, and keep in mind with our budget, our admin headcount remained flat in 2025 compared to 2024. You know, we're looking at every, every replacement position and saying, does it need to be filled now, or can we delay it a little bit? And we've been very good at that, and that had an impact as well with our expenses for the month. Fuel lubricants, as I mentioned, those were down primarily with the lack of driving and the lower miles that we drove. And the other two items, parts and supplies and all other, both were under budget due to pretty much a lack of just spending. And now, as we know, this is my favorite page, but I'm a little disappointed only because my wall of numbers, we don't have as many numbers because our year-to-date isn't there yet. So we, it's only a month to date because it's only in January. But really want to highlight again the ridership number, so impressive when you look at the week that we had and seeing that it was pretty much flat to last year. Very impressive there. And even though it was under budget, that's all to be expected and can be explained away here. Total revenue, operating revenue, as you mentioned earlier, right on budget. Same thing with the non-operating revenue, right on budget. And with the expenses, it was the, you know, the access, the extra vacancy, along with the fuel piece that drove that. And then we'll flip to the other, the final page I'm going to go through, and again, if there's any questions, please stop me. This is, if you go to the, keep going there, Natalie, it's the investment reserve piece. Thank you, right there. So this page, for everyone's benefit, it shows our operating cash that we had was $155 million. But just knowing that we don't have that much money to spend on anything we want, we do have commitments. And these commitments are, that we have below are not just annual commitments, they could be items that are included in our, in our long-term budget, in our long-term capital plan. So this just shows that while we do have $155 million, we, a lot of that is spoken for, and we've got to manage it. So we, we are doing that, it's nice to see the cash there. A couple items that aren't on the list that we're not going to go through a slide, one was to kind of highlight on Mr. Etheridge's comment on fuel hedging. We are almost fully hedged for this year, and we are looking to layer in more hedges in 2026 with the prices that we're seeing, to get some price certainty, which is always a good news for us. And then if you, it's included in your deck, but on the MTIF Fund, in the Finance Committee last week, I wanted to highlight that the MTIF Fund, as a CFO, I don't like to spend money other than with the MTIF Fund. And it was the first month, it was a great, it was the largest spend or disbursement that we had, which was very impressive. And for me, it just kind of shows the maturation of the whole program. And Hillel and his team, as several board members were there for the signing, you can see how appreciative people are with this program. And just to throw a number out there, our dispersments in January were about $4.7 million, and that's over $2 million greater than any other month we had in 2024. So really a testament to Hillel and his team and the good that we're bringing to the community. And that's it. Any, any questions from the group here? All right, thank you, everyone.
And we look forward to your wall of numbers growing next month.
It'll be an extra wall, don't worry.
Now, Metro on the move. Andy Allen.
All right, thank you. Our CEO, Darryl Haley, is under the weather this evening, sends his absolute best to all of you. And on his behalf, I'll provide Metro on the move. As you can see, in the late winter, early spring, the legislative seasons are in the air, right? State legislatures convene, legislature in Washington convenes as well, and we make sure that we go out and maintain these very important relationships. You can see on the sheet there that we have the pleasure of meeting with State Senator Steve Wilson, State Representative Cindy Abrams, Rachel Baker, Karen Brownlee, Mike Odioso, Cecil Thomas. Great opportunity to, one, you know, reconnect, get them updated on what's going on at Metro, and then see how we can help as, you know, members of this community, right? The other piece is that we had the privilege of testifying in front of the State House Transportation Committee last week, again advocating for more funding from Columbus for public transportation. State of Ohio is actually pretty far behind in terms of the list of states and their per-capita investment in public transportation. A lot of other states and a lot of other public transit systems get a significant amount of their funding from state. We don't. So we continue to advocate for increasing the funding from Columbus. You know, the other thing that I'd like to say about our legislative visits is that, you know, it's also an opportunity to thank these folks. A lot of the success that we have had at Metro wouldn't be possible without the rules and the regulations and the fixes and the things that have been done, and it's sometimes thankless work, so we take that opportunity on the behalf of the board and staff to thank those folks that provide and serve, serve the public. Next big piece, as you all saw, you've seen this all over social media, that BRT gets its name. I think the most important thing here is to highlight and underscore the public and our employees and our passengers have been involved in this project development process from the beginning. They were there to help us narrow the four corridors to the two, they were there to help us decide where do the major design features of the stations, and they ultimately were there to decide the name of the system. You know, so Welcome Metro Rapid, which is the new, new brand for our BRT corridors, we're super excited about it. Again, Hillel and his team, and Brandy and their team, and the consultant team, and Sharon put on an incredible event to launch and got a lot of buzz that week, which is really, really cool. There are continued open houses, or public engagement is the name of the game, will be back out again. You can see the dates here in the file and also at metrobrtproject.com. And last but not least, well, I guess not last but not least, recognition keeps coming, Darryl Haley Day. The Hamilton County Commissioners marked February 23rd as Darryl Haley Day in Hamilton County. We were there to help celebrate Darryl. This is an incredible honor, but, but just a small thank you for the 19 years of incredible work that Darryl has done here at Metro, benefited this organization, and even greater benefit to the community. So great to celebrate Sunday, February 23rd is Darryl Haley Day. Speaking of celebration, Employee Appreciation Week. The National Transit Employee Appreciation Day is March 17th, and we will be celebrating all week. You know, at Metro, if it's a day, we'll do it for a week. So please join us in social media here at the facility, celebrating the 1,200 folks that are part of the Metro team. These are the folks 24/7 that are out doing the work and helping our passengers get to where they need to go. And speaking of that, Golden Bus Awards. This is the program that we have every year to recognize the best of Metro and those folks on our team that, that serve as models. So we'll be there March 7th, celebrating the Golden Bus Awards. Hope you're able to join us. And I guess the last thing is just to thank the board. I know we've had a lot going on in the last month, we always have a lot going on, we've had a lot of thoughtful discussion in this room, and really appreciate your thoughtfulness, the amount of attention and effort that you bring to the board and to these decisions. And we're off and running for another month. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
I just wanted to compliment, thank Natalie for sending out all those invites. You know, Andy just alluded to it, but those open houses, it came up during committee as an opportunity to see, to hear from people who don't, aren't able to show up here necessarily during our hours and go out to their community. And there are certainly some big ones and some small ones, and obviously, we're not to attend all of them, but the opportunities are there. So thanks for putting them on our calendar.
So there's only three minutes left in the open house for today, so not much time to get over there, but there are tomorrow at the Downtown Library if you have a chance to get to it. And I think that covers the meeting for today. There is new business, and speaking of new business, I'm just, I'm trying to transition for you here, BRT is a new part of our operations, and there's been a lot of interest in it. And I understand we have some BRT information and other items for the board to, to look at after the meeting over here by the entrance. So like there's some orange hats that I think you all enjoy, and maybe a few other things. Is there any other new business, though?
Let me say, first of all, forgive me for coming in late. As I was on my way here, received a call about Gwen Robinson, and that she wasn't doing well, so as a pastor and friend, went to be with her. And she wanted, she kicked me out, wanted me to come here and say that she really missed being here. And so keep her in your prayers.
Thank you very much. Cheers. All right. This meeting is adjourned.